Oh, Deb, are we good?
Great.
Okay. So, good evening and welcome to the February 26, 2019 City Council's special meeting. I'm Mayor Debbie Burtland. Will the city clerk please call roll?
Good evening. Mayor Debbie Burtland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saleem Nees?
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Andrell?
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Bassett? Councilmember Wendy Wyker? Councilmember David Wiesentiner? And Councilmember Benson Wong?
Here.
Great, thank you. So, our first item of business is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
First and second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the agenda passes. Just for those who may actually have started watching already, if I understand correctly, Councilmember Bassett will be absent this evening and Councilmember Wyker should be joining us after the executive session? Okay. The City Council will now recess into executive session to discuss pending or potential litigation with legal counsel pursuant to RCW 4230-1101I for approximately 60 minutes. The Council is not expected to take final action after this executive session. Thanks. So, good evening. And welcome back to the February 26, 2019 City Council's special meeting. The Council's completed an executive session and will now move on to special business. So, we are first, and actually only, item of special business is Agenda Bill 5534, which is Black History Month Proclamation, and that is February. And you can ask, why are we perhaps doing this so late in the month? And it is because it has been an extraordinary month in terms of weather, et cetera. We had been so hopeful and been planning to have our special guests earlier, several weeks earlier, but then we canceled a few meetings, and I suspect other people were somewhat inhibited by weather and roads and everything else. So, we are here tonight. With that, I would like to invite Assistant to the City Manager, Allye Speeds, to come forward. She's going to introduce our guest.
Thank you, Mayor Burtland and Council. Tonight, we are having, are celebrating Black History Month with a proclamation, and we have asked Dr. Tumani Coker to join us this evening. Dr. Coker is Associate Professor of Pediatrics at the University of Washington. She's the Director of Research at Seattle Children's Center for Diversity and Health Equity and a Principal Investigator at the Seattle Children's Research Institute Center for Child Health, Behavior, and Development. Quite a title. But we asked Dr. Coker to come and be with us tonight and to accept this proclamation on behalf of the community. She is a Mercer Island resident and is a member of One MI, a local parent group, who meet to discuss issues of race, equity, and access. So, Dr. Coker, I'd like to invite you up with anyone else that you would like to have come with you.
All right. So, I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we're going to hope that our guests will say a few words. So, whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development; and whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted black scholar and son of former slaves, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History and initiated Negro History Week in 1926; and whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout our American experience and is full of individuals who took a stance against prejudice, advanced the cause of civil rights, strengthened families, communities, and our nation; and whereas the study of African-American life and history, 2018 theme, Black Migration, commemorates, emphasizes the movement of people of African descent to new destinations and subsequently to new social realities; and whereas, as a result of their determination, hard work, and perseverance, African-Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to our community and to our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. Now therefore, I, Debbie Burtland, Mayor of the City Mercer Island, do hereby proclaim February 2019 as Black History Month in the City of Mercer Island and encourage all citizens to recognize the continued need to battle racism and to build a society that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all.
Thank you. Thank you to Mayor Burtland and the City Council, and I'd love it if the other members of One MI who are here would introduce themselves too.
My name is Jolene Cook, and I'm a mom, a community member. I live here on the island, and I love the work that we're doing and working towards to have more inclusive dialogue amongst our community so that our children feel welcomed and included in our activities. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Norma Bergquist, and I'm a member of One Mercer Island, and I love that One Mercer Island exists. I love all of my friends on Mercer Island. We have an opportunity to truly love each other and understand each other's background and history. I mean, I love the quote, "We're all the leaves of one tree and the fruits of just one branch." Why wouldn't we want to know everybody's history? It only makes everyone's history richer. This is my son, Amani.
Say hello.
Hi. Hi, mine is Amani, and that's my mom.
I just wanted to say a few words on behalf of One MI and residents of Mercer Island who really care about these issues. So, again, my name is Tumani Coker. I moved here to Mercer Island in August of 2016. I moved with my husband and my three kids. I had, at the time, a starting kindergartner and then a starting sixth grader and another starting sixth grader. And we moved here because it was a beautiful place to live. It was green, has beautiful walking spaces, and I think it has the ability to feel like you live in a small community in the midst of being right under a big metropolitan area, too. In our two and a half years, we're almost three years, or two and a half years of my kids being in school here, however, they, like many other kids that, of parents that I've spoken with, have faced multiple episodes of racial harassment, racial bullying, racial slurs being used towards them. And they're, you know, these are their classmates on Mercer Island. These are our children on Mercer Island. And from things like being told inward, "Go home," to my son, or my 11-year-old son at the time, or a kindergartner telling my kindergartner that her skin looked like poo-poo or that brown people can't be Americans. And so, those experiences, I think, really allowed me to see, and I think that many others, and I think that the City Council is responding to by making this proclamation, is that Mercer Island has a race problem, like many other communities in this country. It's not different, right? But I think what makes it different is that Mercer Island has decided to do something about the race problem, and this is a great start. I think if we think about what we can do as a community, what parents can do, parents can talk to their kids about race, right? Talk to them about what is racism, what's race, not teach their kids to be colorblind. Instead of colorblindness, focus on seeing the beauty of color, the importance of color, and the meaning of color in our society. I think what can the schools on Mercer Island do? You can hire more teachers of color so that students of color have someone to look towards as a role model, and that students who are not of color can really understand a little bit more about people that don't look quite like them. Because in the end, when our kids finish school, we want them to go out in the world and be good citizens, and we live in a very global era. And then what can the city do? I think to continue to support community events that celebrate people of color, to things like we had the first, One MI held the first Juneteenth celebration on Mercer Island. Juneteenth is a celebration of the end of slavery. But really be involved and get the community involved, the whole community, not just one piece of it. But Chinese New Year, Juneteenth, Dia de las Muertas, really celebrating the diversity that's us. And so, I think while we recognize and we know that we are not different than most communities in this country, we have a race problem on Mercer Island, that taking these steps to really address that, talking about the problem, and not kind of keeping it a secret is one of the first steps to really solving that problem. So, thank you to the mayor, and thank you to the City Council members.
So, as again, a special thanks to our guests for coming tonight and I think speaking so eloquently to what a great community we have, but also the work that still remains before us. So, with that, ours, actually, there is a second item of special business tonight. It is a guest speaker from PSE, Community Outreach, and it is Outreach Manager Leslie Myers regarding Puget Sound Energy's Green Power Program. So, we welcome PSE and look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you, Mayor Burtland and Councilmembers. I am not Leslie Myers. My name is David Hoffman, with PSE, Local Government Affairs and Public Policy Manager. And just here to actually provide a little bit of background and then introduce Leslie. PSE has a long history of partnering with Mercer Island on initiatives that reduce the island's carbon footprint. In 2012, we held the island, the Islandwide Renewable Energy Challenge, Mercer Island Gets Green, that resulted in funds for the solar array at your community center. In 2017, we knocked on 834 doors offering free home energy assessments, which are designed to help customers learn about their own homes' energy usage and get immediate savings. For the last five years, we've sponsored Leap for Green, which helps residents of all ages learn about and participate in sustainable lifestyles. We've also worked with the city on ways to reduce its own carbon footprint through our Green Direct program. Now, I'd like to introduce Leslie Myers, who will tell you about what's happening this year. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you. I'm Leslie Myers. So, this year, we are going to knock on, representatives from PSE are going to knock on every home at Mercer, on Mercer Island that will, is safe for us to approach. So, that means they don't have a no solicitation sign, they don't have a beware of dogs sign, or a gate that keeps us out. We will show up and talk to any customer that's interested in learning more about how they can reduce their carbon footprint by signing up for one of, two of our programs. We have a program called Green Power, which is a blend of renewable resources, and a program called Solar Choice, which is a 100% solar product. In both cases, participants match the power that they use at home with renewable energy that's being added to the grid on behalf, on their behalf, and they see a carbon footprint reduction as part of their participation. It's voluntary, and we're looking forward to talking to all of our customers on Mercer Island this year. Curious if anybody has any questions?
Council, any questions? Benson.
So, when is this door knocking going to begin? And how long do you think you'll be at it?
It's already started. We are a little bit delayed because of the snow, which I'm sure slowed a lot of things down on the island. We've already started, and we expect to complete in about two months.
Lisa?
Will you come back and then report to us about your results when you're able to compile them?
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up, too, because our goal for the campaign is to get 200 new enrollments. We have a stretch goal that's larger than that, but we are fairly confident that we're going to reach that goal of 200.
Saleem?
So, are you going to knock on doors of people that are already in one of those programs?
No, we won't.
That's a shame, because I'm in one of those programs. I didn't choose the solar one because it was, I couldn't quite understand it. And if that is 100%, I mean, if it's more green than the other program, I certainly would be interested in knowing about it.
Yeah. They're equally green. They both reduce your carbon footprint. What it is, is that Solar Choice is 100% solar, so it's more expensive. It's also the newest of the two programs. Solar gets more comfortable and more familiar in the Pacific Northwest, and we install, you know, implement more. It's a more viable option. The Green Power Program has actually been around for 12 years, and that is a blend of resources. So, it has a little bit of solar, it has wind, it also has biogas and landfill waste. So, it's kind of, they both reduce your carbon footprint. They just sort of, one invests more in new and burgeoning technologies that aren't as, that are, whose prices are coming down, and the other one is just focused solely on solar. We know our customers are really interested in solar, so that's part of why we developed that program as solar became more reasonable.
If I might, how many households are there and how many are already enrolled?
Yes, I'm glad you asked. We have 789 households currently in the Green Power Program and 36 in Solar Choice. If we have, we meet our goal of 200, which would be about a 3% result from all the doors that we'll knock on, we're expecting the carbon reduction to be 2.1 million pounds of carbon that's less associated with Mercer Island homes.
Over what period of time?
One year. So, when everybody's in the program, if they choose 100% for one year, then it'll be 2.1 million reduced carbon pounds for our City of, or Mercer Island, carbon footprint. Couple of, just to put that in a context, I did some quick calculations, too, that are based on an EPA calculator. That's equivalent to 2.4 million miles not driven, 111,000 gases, gallons of gasoline not used, and my personal favorite, 41,000 barbecue cylinders not used for backyard barbecues.
That humanizes it.
Yeah. Thank you. Sure. Any other questions?
Council, any further questions? I think we will look forward to hearing how Mercer Island does.
Yeah, absolutely.
Please do come back.
Yeah, David and I will definitely be back.
Great. I'm sorry, I did have one more question.
Sure.
If you don't reach people because people are at work, do you have a plan to leave a door hanger where people can loop back to you?
Yes. We, whenever we approach any door, if there isn't an answer, then we will leave something on there to let you know that we were there, and the Green Power knockers will let, will be specific to Green Power. Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Super. So, with that, the next item on our agenda is appearance, well, oops, is not appearances, it's actually the City Manager's Report. And for that, we have City Manager Julie Underwood.
Good evening, Council. I have a number of items to report on. First of all, oh, can you help me? I'm sorry. I thought it might have been up. Oh, there it is. Thank you. Congratulations to our finance team for another clean state audit. So, this is, I think, year '24 or '25. It's pretty astounding. '24, the 24th year that we have received a clean audit, and the audit process is quite lengthy. It involves state employees coming and being on site for two to three months. It costs taxpayers about $50,000 to complete the audit. So, when it's over and we receive the notice that it's a Clean Bill of Health, it is quite exciting to see that. So, I just want to thank and show my gratitude to our finance team and all the staff. Oftentimes, it involves many staff across the city to help pull this together. So, again, congratulations to our finance team. Also, want to congratulate our HR department, who earned the 2019 Well City Award. To do this, the city must meet all 40 of the award requirements, and what this provides is a 2% discount on our AWC Trust Medal premiums. So, this is quite worth it. And we are among just 114 employers in Washington to earn this award. So, really, congratulations to our HR department and our wellness team for making this happen. Also, Mercer Island was voted Best Pup Approved Outdoor Venture. Actually, Mercer Island tied with two amazing local spots, Discovery Park, Loop Trail, the South Ship Canal Trail, and Sidewalk Dog, and, oh, and so, this was covered in the Sidewalk Doc Dog Media's Reader's Choice Awards. That's a mouthful, but pretty neat to have, I guess, dog owners vote on this. Not dogs themselves, but. Mercer Island's gallery's latest exhibit is "Am I in Focus?" It's now through April 12 at the Community Center. Nine photographers from Mercer Island joined together for this group exhibit, capturing a range of subjects on diverse materials such as canvas and metal. And you can hear more from the artists by attending the artist's reception that's being hosted on Thursday, February 28, 6:30 to 8. Join us this Thursday night between 6:00 and 8:00 at the Community Center for the Aubrey Davis Master Plan Community Open House. For those unable to attend in person that evening, we are holding an online open house So, this is about our Waterfront Cross Connection surveys. Residents have been receiving these notices, so I just wanted to bring your attention to them. Approximately 800 waterfront homes received notices the first week of February, asking the owners to certify the status of their connections to the city's potable water supply. This is required by city code. It's our backflow program, and it's been in place since 2014, really in response to the Boyle Water Event that took place. Without a suitable device to prevent backflow, these connections could allow dirty water to enter the clean water supply system. So, we really care about this. The deadline to return those surveys is March 1, and residents who do not respond in time will receive a courtesy reminder by mail, and ultimately, if unresponsive, could be fined. A similar survey of commercial water customers will occur as well this spring. So, if you'd like to learn more, you can visit the city's website. We have upcoming restoration events on Saturday, March 2, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Ellis Pond. Another one also Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Pioneer Park. Visit mercergov.org/foreststewardship for more info. Many of you already know this, but our foundation annual breakfast was rescheduled to Wednesday, March 6. The event will celebrate the 30 years the foundation has really made a positive impact on our community. The doors open at 7:00, and the breakfast program begins at 7:30. In the, also that same day, we have Shop Local event that also benefits the foundation. So, all day that day, various businesses will provide 20% of their proceeds to the foundation. You can visit merceralinenchamberofcommerce.org for a complete list of those businesses. The Critical Areas Update Public Hearing will be Wednesday, March 6, at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. The city is required by state law to periodically update its Critical Areas Ordinance and Shoreline Master Program. In fact, I believe the Critical Areas Ordinance was last updated in 2005, so we are long overdue. The draft Critical Areas and Shoreline Master Program updates are available on the city's Let's Talk website. You can get FAQs, background documents, and a video explaining the code update process there as well. We are helping to promote a bike drive that's taking place on March 9 at the New Seasons Market, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They will be hosting a used bicycle collection event in their parking lot. We heard about one earlier this evening. Maybe you could donate a used or old bike and accessories to Bike Warts. This is a southeast Seattle nonprofit. What they do is they refurbish these bikes, and they sell and give them away to those who cannot afford to buy one. So, staff also teach bike repair to youth and adults, and they also provide empowering bike-related youth programs year-round. So, it's a great nonprofit, and of course, if our residents are looking to donate a bike, this is a great place to do it. And I'm very excited to report on the snow response. The staff reminded me, this started on The staff reminded me, this started on basically Super Bowl and it lasted, seemed like forever. The city's snow response was a multi-department effort, included Public Works, Police, Fire, Parks and Rec, of course, Communications, hours and hours of time. So effectively, starting on Super Bowl, our team worked 24 hours, 24 hours. In fact, I've asked them to come tonight and explain and help really educate all of us in what was involved in, in really responding to an event that happens once every 10 years, I guess. So Jason, if I can ask you to come up and just kind of coordinate everyone's response.
Sure. Jason Kenner, Public Works Director, tonight. We'll do a team approach. As this event, as Julie noted, it was a multi-department effort. When we activate the EOC, it's not just Police and Fire, it's really to support the entire operations of the city, which includes Public Works, Police, Fire, Parks and Recreation, the utility team helps out, our communication folks. It really is a multi-pronged effort. So with that, I'll introduce Brian Harvickson, who can come in and talk about some of our specific sander, plow, roads, and applications that took place. It really did start on February 3, and this event went through February 14. So it's a really long stretch, not, not common. I know there's some additional questions the council will have, and we will tag-team our responses tonight for you.
Brian Harvickson, the Right-Away Team Manager. So really, it was February 1 when we had the snowfall in the forecast. So we mobilized all of our available snow plows and we topped off our de-icer fluid, made sure we had salt and sand available for a typical snowstorm event, because at that time, we didn't know it was approaching. So we were ready for that in advance. The crews agreed to this schedule change where they would have 12-hour shifts, so we'd split the crew in half. There'd be a 12-hour night shift, 12-hour day shift, and they willingly stepped up to do that. Many of them live in the outskirts that you've heard about of North Bend and Maple Valley, where they had 30 inches of snow. And every single crew member made it into work on time and was able to respond to this event for the islanders, so I'm proud of that. In general, this map covers almost every island on this, in the city. Some of the areas are highlighted are private roads. But these are areas that were tracked from the onboard GPS system. And most of this is actually from February 8 to the 14th. The first wave, which started on the 3rd, actually didn't have the trackers in all the vehicles yet, so that first wave is not completely accounted for. Some of these public roads that are not highlighted, there's just small sections of maybe Forest Avenue and 82nd and, if you really get into the details. I'd like to highlight the fact that the staff actually, if they were not able to make it up some of the very steep side roads, even with chains and four-wheel drive, they would get out of the vehicle, use five-gallon buckets with salt and sand mix, and actually hike up the hills on foot and spread out the salt and sand mix to try and break up the ice, to hopefully return later with the vehicle when it was safe enough to actually get up there and plow the street. So that was an extra level of service that we provided. This is our heat map using the onboard modems, mainly from the 8th to the 14th. And this shows the number of passes that we did on roadways. So the darker the color, the more passes the plows passed on that roadway. So primarily, it's the arterials, but you can see some of the side roads as well. Overall, we did over 3,000 miles of roadway passes, so. Significant.
I'll just remind the council that there's eight FTEs within the Right-Away Team. So what Brian's talking about, when splitting up in crews, we split basically in four-man crews. We have, in our city operations, we have six plows, three of those which have sanders, and one of those is a de-icer. So basically, that's two trucks that's just a plow. That's quite a bit of mileage and ground covered with that size of a fleet. And I'll say that, that size of a fleet for a city our size in operation is, is a pretty good number in comparison to some of our neighbors out there. The other thing I'll note too, and Dave will be touch on this, is this really was a region-wide effort. So we opened our EOC. As many people know, one of our sanders did go down. We put in immediate requests for additional resources throughout the region. There was, one of our local cities had another sander available for us. Unfortunately, it just didn't fit our model of pickup truck, and so we couldn't use it. But there was that type of collaboration and teamwork and harmony happening across the region. The other piece I'll note here is, we have one city mechanic, and that mechanic also made it in. This equipment's running 24 hours a day. It's all mechanical in operation. It breaks down from time to time, actually quite a bit. Just, it's running sand and salt is hard on an equipment. And the mechanic made it in, got her up, equipment up and operational. We banded it multiple times to get it through this type of event. So really, really, truly a team effort. Dave, you want to come talk about police operations?
Good evening, Counsel. I'm Dave Jokinen, your Police Operations Commander. For the snow event, the Police Department was very busy and the officers were very busy. We coordinated closely with our partners in Public Works and the Fire Department and also the Parks Department helped out quite a bit too. So for us, it started, Super Bowl Sunday night, started snowing on Super Bowl Sunday. Snowed a little harder than we expected it was going to snow. However, that snow led us to a call late Super Bowl Monday morning where we had some car prowlers breaking into residents' cars. And due to the snow, the officers were able to track both vehicle tire prints and the individual's footprints when they bailed out of the car, because they got stuck, because they didn't have snow tires. And we took two people into custody and with the help of our, of our residents who called that in, and it was just a, a great job overall. So, so during the event, after we got that initial snow, it kind of thawed out a little bit, but then we started making our plans and we activated the EOC. Officer, our Emergency Management Officer, Jennifer Franklin, operated the EOC. It was active for six days, 101 hours. During that time, she's coordinating and information sharing with our county and our regional partners, making resource requests, as you know what Jason alluded to, as far as sand, sand and salt and de-icer and, and vehicle assistance. Also providing food and places for the emergency responders to rest. As Jason alluded to, they're working 12-hour shifts. We set up a couple bunk rooms down in the, in the basement of City Hall for first responders to, to rest, rest in. On Friday, the 8th, was sort of the one the next wave hit. Everybody was warned to leave work early on Friday, the 8th. And a lot of people heeded that warning. They, they left, they were, you know, coming back on the island, you know, around 12:30. And then around 1:30 for us, as snow was coming down heavy and we're getting all sorts of calls, we then got a call for a bank robbery at the Wells Fargo Bank. Some individual decided to go and rob the bank. And our officers did an outstanding job. They got there quickly, they were there before the guy even left the bank. And were able to set up around the bank and capture him as he exited the bank out in the parking lot, basically red-handed with cash in his hand and take him into custody. And they just did an outstanding job with that. Also, some of the less glamorous items that we dealt with. We had nine traffic collisions that were investigated, eight hit-and-run collisions. And then there were also numerous other traffic collisions that we referred to online reporting. If, if it wasn't a blocking accident or someone wasn't injured, we weren't able to get out there because of the, the snow and the risk and the danger associated with it. We also had about 60 other traffic-related issues, stuck or blocking vehicles. They also, you know, down trees, power lines, everything else that went along with, with snow. And this is a lucky snow event, as far as I'm concerned, and we still had that. And we also had 29 public assistance calls, people calling in wanting us to check on someone to make sure that they're okay, and other related calls. Also, I just want to say to our residents, our residents did a really good job during this snow event. I really believe that they, they heeded the, the warnings and the advice, you know, put forth by the weather gurus as far as when to commute, when to stay off the road, and to help each other out. So I just want to applaud our residents for the good job that they did too. So, thanks.
So just some total overtime costs. We're, right now, we're, these numbers are continuing to change as we tally our numbers and receive invoices. But right now, we're at about $51,000 or $52,000 in total overtime costs. From children, materials and equipment, it's about $40,000. As Dave mentioned, the EOC operated for 101 hours, and our communication team put in 88 hours. I think it's important to note that your EOC group gets a weather report, a special weather forecast, we're tied into a forecast daily. So this was really towards sort of two storms. So we saw the first storm coming through, but everyone significantly under-predicted the amount of snow they were going to get. So if you recall, on Super Bowl Sunday, we had a sort of a slight snow flurry in the afternoon. We were expecting a, like a quarter to a half inch of snow, nothing more than that. And then we all went to bed that night and woke up the next morning and there was multiple inches on the ground. Our primary resource provider for materials is Department of Transportation. Because of that, and after that event, the forecaster started seeing additional snow in the forecast, in this long, long period of freezing temperatures. DOT had to conserve their resources as well. And so we had to go to our second and third options and resources to acquiring salt and sand. To Brian's credit, through our EOC and resource request, we found a local supplier in Seattle. Bring this to your attention, because as soon as that Monday hit, our team was starting to make trips, stockpiling materials for the upcoming next event, the big snowmageddon event. We have limited space in our storage yard. We can only, we can only hold so much material at a time. But starting Monday, the team started making round trips down to Seattle. It started out as an hour, about an hour round trip, plus or minus. But by the end of the week, that hour trip turned into a four-hour round trip. Because as the crew got down there to get materials, there was a line of every other Mr. Paddle out the gate trying to get materials. So to Brian, to the team's credit, Ross, the whole, you know, the whole operation team really, really stepped up, saw this, and really took the steps necessary to make sure that we were supplied throughout the duration of the event. So Ross, you want to talk about some of the communications?
Sure. So Ross Freeman, Sustainability and Communications Manager. I am the communications team, this is it. So there were some long hours over, those 88 hours were me over 10 days. And it really helped. I mean, as Commander Jokinen said, people really did heed the messaging, and that was, that was great to see. Generally, folks were off the roads when we said the worst stuff was coming and believed us when we said there's yet more coming. And over the, over the course of the 10 or 12-day event, there was a lot of, let's see if I have a slide here, and just pop out of the, get some stats for you. I think it's down here. So in the course of that, we put out 10 news releases, 25 tweets, I did 23 posts on Nextdoor, I had about 40 engagements, private messages in social media, 86 different Facebook posts on our different platforms. I talked about nine residents and five emails, and that's all me. That's one person doing that over time. So we, we really did get the messaging out, and I work a lot with the EOC and the team to make sure that all the messaging is going out consistently and we get the most updated information we can get from the field. I'm always begging the field staff to take photos for me because that just tells such a great story. Video is even better and helps people see what we're doing out there and what it's like. And I did want to underscore too, that, you know, these 24/7 shifts that the field crews are doing, this is white-knuckle driving in the evening. You know, it's stressful, the snow is coming down, and it's a real credit that, you know, the team just kept coming back for, for more and more of that. You know, it's, this is not relaxing, and to do it day in, day out. So back to that, back to the communications piece here. We did see a lot of great feedback from the public, and some of the, some of the engagement in particular was really, really notable for us. We had, some of our, some of our social media posts were reaching 7,000 people. We had one with a snowman from Jason's kids, 15,000 people looked at that tweet. So it's great to see that when things really are significant in the public safety sphere, people are coming to the city to get the accurate information and turning to the, the source that they trust for this. We appreciate that, that that's what happened. On the right-hand side there, we've just got a few quotes amongst the many that came in, dozens and dozens of quotes from different platforms and an email just thanking us for, for what was done. And people really did go above and beyond whenever they could. And again, as Jason said, we do coordinate a lot with King County's EOC too, to make sure that we're on the same page with what the next round of forecasting is saying and communicating regional messaging. We have very good relations there, and that really was, was evident in this, in this event. With that, I'll hand it back to Jason.
Sure. So we're here to answer questions. Although the snow is melting, our work is far from over. The picture on the lower right is a great picture of still what's out there. So there's a ton of sand on the roadways. We have to get out there with sweepers and clean up the debris. We have to get out there with a vacuum truck to basically suck out our catch basins where the sand gets into the catch basins, so we clean them. And then we have all those little buttons that you see washed up on the side there that we have to go through and replace on the Mercer Ways in particular. Unfortunately, that's just the cost of doing business, especially in a snow event where residents park along the Mercer Ways. We have, narrows the roadway, and you've got a plow running that basically runs down the middle of the road to clear the roadway. Unfortunately, those raised pavement markings, RPMs or buttons, suffer from that. And so Brian's team has already been out replacing them. Weather is dependent on that, but they're already starting to make progress on that. But they'll get, they'll get them done this summer. Definitely a larger number than our normal quantity, but we'll get it done. So still, work continues, but we're getting back to a somewhat normal state. So with that, any additional questions for us?
Counsel, any questions? Or kudos perhaps, both to the public and of course, to staff? Benson, then Lisa, Wendy, Salim?
Yeah, I don't think you guys will get enough kudos. I mean, you really deserve a lot and appreciate it on a personal level, I'm sure, on behalf of the city. So thank you for that. A question I have is simply, you know, this is obviously an historic event. Hopefully, it doesn't come every 10 years. But, you know, I was just curious, Jason, as far as the team approach, what things you might do differently? Lessons learned? Chat it with you briefly, and if you can just share. I mean, obviously, you're a great guy, you're not perfect, so there's always lessons to be learned.
Absolutely. We always do a lessons learned debrief. Just due to timing, we haven't had a, we've had some individual conversations, we haven't had that collective conversation. But a couple things definitely rise to the, rise to the top. So last year, we implemented a C-click Fix app, and we really, Ross really helped push that this year. It's tied into the backend and our, the crew's business system. So they're working from their day-to-day business operations, but it's got a public interface app. What we learned through this process was that it adds, an event like this, when the requests come in, it's great to get those requests, but administratively, we went out there and would go and plow a street or sand a street. By the time the crew would actually come back, close out that work, goes through its normal business process of cleaning it up and closing it out, it was just too much administrative, the timing was too long administratively to actually, you know, be a live map. And so that was a struggle point, that's a pinch point for us. That's definitely a lesson learned. The third sander that we've talked about, it's a, it runs on a Poli system. It's a smaller truck, it's a smaller sander. On an event like this, we went through, how many belts?
At least three.
At least three different belts to run that sander. And so as we outfit that truck in the future, as it comes up for its replacement cycle, we'd probably look for a different setup, a different mechanical setup. We'd go to a hydraulic setup rather than a Poli system. That would help with our operations on the road. So there's definitely some lessons learned, we'll continue to work through them as we debrief together, but those are some that comes off the top of our head immediately.
Lisa?
Thanks. Jason, so congratulations on a very professional and well-done response and tough, tough times. It wasn't just one snow or two snows or three snows, it was four snows. So I, kudos there, really. So, kudos there, really. Two things. One, you and I talked offline and you gave me a little bit of a 101 on the relative benefits and disadvantages of sand versus salt. And there was some internet traffic about, you know, the city should be using all salt. You know, the city should do this, the city should do that. And I wonder if you could just give a very brief explanation of the benefits and downfalls of both of those? And then if you could also talk about the, does it make sense with all of these dead turtles or lost buttons on the street to go to striping? Or is the safety of the buttons really make a difference?
So I'm going to, I'll defer to Brian on the first question. On the second question, and I will say also, the first question, that's a great lesson learned. So getting out, when we have a chance now to sort of step back, developing an FAQ that's sort of prefabbed, that we can get out there to the community early on would be helpful because we were answering the same question 100 different times. And so, pre, getting something pre-ready for the next event will be very helpful. That's another lesson learned. As far as the buttons and striping goes, we've talked about that internally as well. We definitely need to bring our engineers on board and make sure that engineers, it's something we'll think about and talk about. I don't have an answer for you at this exact moment, but it's something we'll consider. You want to talk about the sand salt?
Yeah, one of the items that we use is the liquid calcium chloride.
Can you speak into the microphone just a little?
We use the liquid calcium chloride treatment typically as a pretreatment. So if it's dry and it's 37 degrees and falling, we can go and treat some areas that we know are going to ice up prior to the event. So that's what we did on the third. We pretreated many of the hills to hopefully make it so there would not be a bond of ice that forms onto the road and we could plow it after it started snowing. So that's typically when we use the liquid de-icer. The sand is great because it's visible. It provides a little extra level of traction on the hills. When mixed with the salt, it also breaks up the ice. You have to sweep it up later, that's the downside. The salt is very beneficial because it does break up the compact ice. You have to let it sit for a while and let it actually do its work of breaking up the ice before you plow it again. So that's one of the tricks. Also, people tend to see that you apply the salt, but they don't really see it as visible as the salt-sand mix. So they tend to question if we actually passed over that area with a treatment. So when they see the salt and sand mixed together, it gives them that visual cue that we've been through the area and that helps in that regard too. So, that helps.
The other thing I'll just add to that too is we rely on police and fire. They are the ones on the roads as well. And so we are in direct communication with police and fire in terms of what the road conditions are. On the south end of the island in particular, we have a lot of shady areas where even though it might be sunny on the north end or in some sunspots where that pavement warms up, it takes a while for that pavement on the south end and those shady spots to work. And so in those types of, in those locations, we would apply, you know, salt predominantly to try and break up some of that material. But there's an art to it and it requires communication from the folks that are actually in the field and communicating back to the center hub to make sure we're applying the right material.
Great, Wendy, then Saleem.
I just want to give a huge shout out and thank you to everybody who responded to this. And I know response doesn't just happen. It's a lot of planning and preparing and thinking ahead of time about what we're going to do and how we're going to deploy resources. And the fact that you could get crews to come in from off-island, from remote areas in Duval and North Bend and down south with the road conditions being as unsafe as they were and those folks leaving their families behind to deal with whatever was happening in their communities. Huge shout out for preparedness and thank you for all of that pre-planning and being ready. And we knew it was coming and you guys were certainly ready. So thank you for that. And especially Jennifer Franklin, who kept that EOC running for that long. And Ross, halftime, you did 88 hours in 10 days. And all I heard from all my friends and neighbors in the community was, wow, these communications are just awesome. And I didn't know if you had any help and to hear you didn't, even more impressive. So thank you for the Facebook, the Nextdoor, the Twitters, the this, the that. I mean, really, really stupendous response and all the interdepartment coordination as well as inter-agency department with King County and all the other cities working together through all of that emergency management, planning and preparedness that we do year-round for this kind of emergency and more. So thank you, this shows we're kind of ready and hopefully we don't have this very often, but earthquakes, storms, wind, whatever. I think a huge testament to you guys and your training with your staff. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I would just also add just an example of the quick turnaround of information. You know, we started to get a lot of calls about, well, you know, what about my street around the periphery of the island here? And some folks maybe didn't realize that they lived on private streets. So we very quickly got our best map together of, here's all the private roads. Did you know you may live on one? And put that out. And you know, within sort of 12-hour cycle, those calls stopped. You know, because some folks just didn't realize and we have hundreds of them. It's all of those gray lines around the edges there. Most of those are private. So it was a great example of just kind of being nimble with the information too and it really helped. We got a lot of appreciation in those kinds of settings. So, thanks for that.
Saleem?
I'm just going to ditto what Wendy said because I can't really top that. But obviously, you guys did a great job. I have a three-year-old, Elliot, and to the extent that there were very few hills to go sledding on, his dismay, but everybody that tried to get out or had to get out, their pleasure. I do want to say that one group that we're leaving out tonight that did a great job were the retailers and the store owners and the business owners on the island. I can't thank the crew at the South End QFC enough to, keeping that store open the hours that they did because it kept a lot of people who were walking to the store, walking to get supplies, to have a place to go, which was great. And I know there were some north-end businesses that held open and that was in, I saw communications and so I thought that was great. I was hoping that one of you could speak a bit about the equipment because some people hear about, we've got four plows and we've got these de-icers and blah, blah, blah. This is not dedicated to snow equipment, this is just sitting around. This is equipment that is used for other things during the year. And so I know that I've heard during the summer, comments from people like, why do you have a dual-wheel F-350 mega truck down here in this parking lot? Maybe you could just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. You're spot on. This equipment is primarily used for day-to-day operations, not related to snow and ice removal. Even with these trucks with a plow, with a sander, with heavy stuff in it, with four-wheel drive, we still went through 12 sets of chains for these trucks. I mean, that's a lot of chains. That's a lot of, that's piecemealing chains back together as a mechanic. So that's just the type of topography that we have on the island in order for us to get to specific areas. There were, there's certainly some hills that we pre-staged barricades at because we know that it's going to be an issue. And the operator has to use their due diligence to make sure that they can get up and down that hill adequately before they treat it or plow it. So yeah, the trucks, the equipment are multi, they're universal tools that we use for our day-to-day operations, whether it's, you know, stormwater work, whether it's general day-to-day roadway maintenance. But in the winter, for these types of events, they get outfitted with a plow and a sander and they're used for snow and ice removal. So, yeah, it's very, very valuable equipment when you need it. For the cities that didn't have that much equipment, they were in a much tougher situation than we were.
So I'm going to just close here with a couple kids, enterprising youngsters that they are, were asking if those buttons should be collected and could be sold back to the city. And my response was, don't you dare go in the street and pick up those buttons because, you know, usually those buttons are on streets that have a fair amount of traffic. But I think the interesting question remains, is there any benefit in people bringing bags of buttons back to the city? I told them I would ask.
There's a chance that we can reuse some of them if they want to drop them by the city shop.
But don't go in the middle of the street.
Do not collect them in the middle of the street. Don't put your safety at risk.
Okay, just a second. The other point again is to reiterate kudos to all the businesses that were open. I know in the town center, there were several merchants who said that business was particularly good and I think Barrels was one of them. I think after a few days, some of our islanders had a little bit of cabin fever. So just reiterating that special thanks. And of course, just an acknowledgement, I think there's, what I'm hearing here is a team. You know, it was teen, it was team, it was collaborative, it was shared responsibility. I think what I would look forward to hearing more about, as you have time to reflect, is what can the island do? For example, there were many people who were traveling quite a distance to get back here. I know that we actually had capacity. You know, if somebody needed a bed and a hot meal before they had to get back out on that street, you know, we gladly would have contributed. And I think there's probably a lot of other residents who would have. So in that vein, if there's a way that we can, as a community in the future, show our appreciation, that would be terrific. But I think Saleem had one more question. I just think, you know, outstanding effort on everybody's behalf and I'm glad you called out the community as well. They did their part, so thanks.
So Debbie touched on it and kind of reminded me. Is there anything that we can do locally around our homes to help out? I mean, is sweeping around the storm drain or, just tell us if there's anything that we can do?
Yeah, so I mean, we always push for keeping the storm drain clear. Obviously, if it's safe to do, if it's in your driveway, that's an important thing to do. If you have collection of buttons, you can bring them back to us. We're not going to pay you for them, but we'll definitely collect them and try and reuse them. And then if there's ever an issue, we have a great app, See Click Fix. It's a great opportunity for you to submit a request. It's actually better information for us to get via the app because it's, you can take photos, it geolocates it, you can get a response, you can track the progress. And so if there's ever an issue, use the app, get a service request in for us. Our team will respond accordingly and we'll follow up with you. So those are, as Ross is pulling up here. So via the city website, you can actually go to the See Click Fix app and submit it via the website or you can download the app and submit it via the application on your phone.
Okay, Benson?
Just a short question. I know that Chip's not here, but the question is simply, how's the city going to pay for this? My understanding is that it may not have been necessarily budgeted. And so the question is, and we don't have to have the answer, but we probably would like to know at some point.
Yep, absolutely. So we're still collecting invoices and so we'll have a total number. There's a couple of things still in play. The governor issued a state of emergency. So there may be an opportunity for us to recoup some costs through that. We don't know yet. We have some homework to do on that point. If there is, you're absolutely right. We don't ever plan for an event this big. We plan for the typical two to three events, the small events, like one Z, two Z type of thing throughout the course of the year. This is certainly different. We'll do a total at the end. If there's an appropriation, we'll come back to the council at a later point in time with appropriation request. But there's a couple of things we have to work through in terms of getting that total cost, determining whether or not there is an opportunity to go after some additional funding sources and then come back to you if need be.
Okay, Julie?
And Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to share an email I received from one of our right-of-way frontline staff. He writes to me, he says, "Thank you so much for the treats. It's nice to be supported and appreciated, especially during demanding times. Speaking of support and appreciation, I'd like to mention Jason Kitner and Brian Harvadson for their outstanding support and appreciation of their people in the face of many hours of stress and continued obstacles placed in the way of everyone's coordinated efforts. It speaks to their level of loyalty and dedication, not only to the residents of Mercer Island, but also to the people who work for them. I'm sure you're already aware of this fact, but I thought it was worth mentioning that it doesn't go unnoticed throughout all levels of our organization." So, let's give them a hand.
Okay, Julie, does that conclude the?
Counsel, for letting me recap this, I just wanted you to see the amount of effort really involved in supporting such a response like this. Thank you.
Well, time well spent, definitely. So with that, the next item on our agenda this evening is appearances. And this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the city council on any item. We do, as usual, encourage you to speak to issues rather than individuals. When it's your turn to address the council, please do be sure to speak audibly into the podium microphone. State your name and if so, choosing your address for the record and limit your comments, please, to three minutes. Do we have people for public appearances?
Yes, Mayor, I have two. We have Cheryl D'Ambrosio and Julie Garwood.
Great. So come on up and welcome.
Hi, I'm Cheryl D'Ambrosio, 3712 East Mercer Way. And a few of you have come to my house for espresso and to talk about the topic of, and I'm hoping by now, a few of you in the audience or city council members know when they see me, the topic is safety. So what I wanted to do was share with you what I shared with the planning team yesterday, which was being in a household, married to an Italian.
Excuse me just for one minute. Could you start the timer? Thank you.
Regarding the new zoning and opportunities, there are opportunities for safety. And I think that safety standards and safety planning can happen with community members being involved. And so this little sign just shows, I'm married to an Italian. And I got this from one of my Italian friends who said, this is how Italians have a safe neighborhood and that is by having neighborhood people involved. And so I brought that to the planning committee yesterday evening and shared that and also my desire, because I live right in front of the first zoning application that you are working through. And the types of safety issues that I see happen outside my kitchen window, I feel like I'm one of these old ladies that's always looking out and gasping. For example, on Sunday, there was someone riding a bicycle in front of my house and trailing behind them on East Mercer Way was a toddler cart with obviously an infant behind and they were going out for a Sunday ride. I did not think that on a street, you could have a bicycle with a toddler trailing behind you on East Mercer Way and that that was legal. But yet, I don't know what our safety standards are for areas, especially in areas where there's ambiguity of right-of-way in front of my house. So I wanted to bring that back to the attention of the planning committee and the city council, that where are our standards for safety? And if there aren't any that are really readily available, let's have a committee. Get some neighbors involved. I don't know where that would start, but I'm certainly here advocating for that every chance I get. And thank you for listening to me. Okay.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors. I shared these thoughts on the comp plan amendment with the planning commission last night and I'd like to do so with each of you tonight. My name's Julie Garwood, live at 9772 Southeast 41st Street. I've been engaged in the zone amendment proposal since neighbors first learned of it in May 2018. I've spoken at public hearings, planning commission, city council meetings. I've written letters to commissioners, councilors and city officials. I've attended community meetings as well as meetings held by the applicants. I've voiced my concerns many times over. As you know, as you may know, I like to tell stories about numbers. Tonight, I want to talk about something that's disturbed me most about this whole process and yes, it has to do with numbers. With the help of the city, the applicants had a two-year head start on the proposed zone amendment. They were given an inside track for a proposal which would forever alter our residential neighborhood if the application was approved. With no forewarning, our neighborhood was forced to defend itself against a well-developed proposal that had been long in the making. One thing that neighbors have heard commissioners, councilors and city officials say over and over again is that they really want to do the right thing by neighbors, but what can they do when there are so many more letters for the proposal than against? Just think about that for a moment. Neighbors are being pitted against the applicants and their members. 30 of us, 3,000 of them. Having given the applicants an inside track, city representatives are penalizing residents because they're not writing enough emails or letters. Did we miss something? Is this some game where the more tickets you buy, the greater your chance of winning? Or put another way, the more letters you write, even if they're boilerplate, the greater the chance that your design will be chosen? If so, then neighbors deserve equal consideration, no matter how many letters there are. Having purchased our homes and invested in our community, we have more than enough tickets in this game to entitle us to equal consideration and protection for our neighborhood, even if no letters are written. The word "trust" has been raised in discussions. Can residents trust the city, the city council, to protect neighbors' right to a quiet enjoyment of life? If you say, of course you can trust us, then why didn't you call a meeting of neighbors two years ago? two years ago and tell us what the applicants were proposing? Why didn't you work on our side and not theirs? Or at least, or the very least, each side equally? This process needs to stop now and only start again if and when the city is prepared to do it right. It can't be a spot-zone proposal with an application already embedded in it. If the city truly believes a new zone is needed for Mercer Island, then the entire process of zone creation and code development needs to be finalized before any applicant can submit a proposal to the city. And if this is indeed intended as a zone amendment that can affect all of Mercer Island, then all of Mercer Island must be properly notified and given sufficient time to participate in the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Peter Struck, residing at 9130 Southeast 54th Street. Before I get to my prepared remarks, just on the snow situation, just three quick comments.
Sorry, Deb, could you please start the call?
Oh, yeah, thank you. So first, I think we should also give a shout out to the garbage trucks that they put at South Mercer Playfields. For somebody, you know, for many households that didn't get garbage picked up for two or three weeks, that was a lifesaver. Secondly, I think, you know, our block was probably on a B or C priority, and so having, growing up in the upper Midwest, snow shoveling is in my DNA. So I got our neighbors out, and we just basically shoveled up the hill and so forth. And then, you know, finally, the city came by. But I think it's a good way to get to know your neighbors. And then, third, possible business model, and this, again, is used very commonly in cities that get a lot more snow than we do, but is that they have private contractors that have equipment on a retainer. So when it snows, you know, this private contractor knows that, okay, I have Island Crest Way from, you know, 63rd to wherever, kind of thing. And that way, you know, you don't have to pay a lot of overtime to your own staff and things like that. Now, again, realizing that this is a 10-year event, kind of thing. And then finally, for Councilmember Niece, 91st 100 block of Southeast 54th is good sledding. So now, what I really wanted to come and talk about is tonight, under the consent agenda, is Agenda Bill AB 5533 that seeks to extend the due diligence period to allow more time to negotiate a development agreement on the Freshies property. According to the materials provided, the prospective purchaser has requested this second extension that would last until June 30th. At the time the council entered into this PNS agreement back in June 2018, it was stated that there would be ongoing updates to the community to comply with the council's pledge of increased transparency, as well as a desire to ensure that the community was kept abreast of their stated number-one goal to increase commuter parking. When the first extension was passed back in December, also under the consent agenda, there was no discussion or update to the community. Now that the project is expected to be at least six months behind schedule, I request that the council provide an update as to why the delay. Some thoughts: Has due diligence uncovered material issues that weren't anticipated? Has the purchaser encountered financing problems or challenges? Has the state or some other related agency raised concerns about the transaction? Has the negotiation reached a stalemate that couldn't be resolved in the past two months under the first extension? Or is it something else? I urge the council to be forthright with the community, and if expectations need to be reset, do it sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Distinguished council, Gary Robinson, 6026 East Mercer Way. Performance management is a formal, structured process used to measure, evaluate, and influence employees' job-related attitudes, behaviors, and performance results. It is interesting to note that the process used to evaluate the city manager's performance was a 360-degree process model. With 360-degree feedback, the employer collects performance information all around an employee from his or her supervisors, subordinates, peers, and internal or ultimate customers. I would like to suggest that the performance evaluation was strategically and notably incomplete because it did not include the key primary stakeholder, the ultimate customer, and in this case, Mercer Island residents. Without this key stakeholder, the evaluation is incomplete. It would not have been difficult to include a random sample of residents and produce a truly representative 360-degree evaluation. The city manager, the city survey is not a proxy for this because the city manager directed the creation of the survey. I would like to suggest that the city has many stakeholders, but in terms of city manager performance, the most important is the end user of the city manager's work, the residents. One might wonder that if the city council is supposed to be the community's representatives, whether this report was simply more of a defensive measure or maneuver on the part of council members for questionable judgments made by them over the year in concert with the city manager, particularly in the case of the most spectacular shortcoming, the failure of Prop 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Next item of business is a consent calendar. And as you all know, due to inclement weather, the council's not met actually since January 15th, and therefore, the consent calendar is definitely longer than usual. It contains the following: We have January payables, February payables, payroll, 2018 meeting minutes from May 1st, May 15th, May 22nd, November 8th, November 26th, December 4th, December 6th, December 11th, and December 18th. There were some Scrivener's errors that were corrected in a few of those different meeting minutes. 2019 meeting minutes, also to be approved, January 15th and February 14th, AB 5532, the pump station generator and pump replacements bid award, and AB 5533, Second Amendment to Purchase and Sale Agreement with 2411. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
First and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, consent calendar is approved. This evening, we actually have only one item of regular business, and that is Agenda Bill 5531, the 2018 City Manager Performance Review and Evaluation Report. So there really is not a staff presentation for this. I thought, for the sake of the community, and just as a reminder also to council members, this has been a process that's been going on for a couple of months. We did use an external individual who specializes in this, just as we did in the previous year. The process itself was fairly extensive. There were, as mentioned, 360-degree interviews with the different leadership team members. There was an anonymous survey that each council member filled out and provided to the, again, to the individual who was leading this. There were also, there was a draft, actually multiple draft, reports that were written and reviewed by council. So the report that we have in front of us tonight is a consensus report coming from council. And with that, I think I would just open it up to council if there's any particular comments that they want to make, any questions, and calling out that we do have a recommendation, which is to accept the city manager Julie Underwood's 2018 Performance Review and Evaluation Report. Council, any comment? Wendy?
So I'll start. Start us off and just say, Julie, I want to thank you for a really great job this last year. It was really validating and rewarding to hear from your staff. I sit down on a couple of interviews with staff as they were providing feedback, and I know from working with you directly on a number of different issues, one-on-one and in small groups, and seeing how you handle yourself in the community with us, with your team, really want to commend you for a job well done, and thank you for your service.
Celine?
Yeah, you know, I'll echo that. But I do want to speak a bit more about the process. I mean, this is a process that all of us council members participated in, the leadership team interviews. Many council members, I think every council member probably sat in on some. I know Debbie and I sat in on many. And then the surveys were extended to the leadership team as well. So there were a lot of data points that went through this, and there was a lot of discussion among the council, and a lot of talk back and forth on various drafts and work papers that went into this. I do agree, it is a consensus review, and I do think that everything I heard in every session is echoed in some form in the review. It's been a pleasure working with you, with your enthusiasm, with your drive, with the connections that you have made, the people that you have brought into the organization. It's just really a joy to work with the team and with you. That said, you know, we know it was a tough year. We know we have a tough year ahead of us, and one of the key goals was to regroup, narrow the focus, and do some things really, really well. And unfortunately, the number-one thing that we're going to do is work on our fiscal challenges, and we know that that is something that we have to be committed to, is a long series of hard choices. We hope that through the planning session, which feels like eons ago, but because we haven't had any meetings, that we gave that narrow focus to you and that we can support the city work plan as it stands. That work never stops. But then that narrow kind of focus of council-led initiatives along with yourself. So I'm sure during this feedback, you'll have some comments on whether we did that or not, so I won't ask the question, but I look forward to the year despite the work topic.
Benson?
Julie, again, on a personal level, really appreciate the opportunity to work with you, and I think certainly, since you've been on City Manager, I think I really appreciate the stability and the professionalism that you've brought to the office. Having sat on some of those interviews and listening to members of the leadership team, I think the fact that they speak very highly of you, of your management skills, I think is a testament to your ability to lead. It has been a very difficult time. There's no question about it, as far as the financial challenges that we face and face going forward. And so I look forward to working with you and trying to, you know, basically, reset and move forward. I think one thing that I really like about you is that you do look forward. There's, again, going to be challenges, but I think with your optimism and your enthusiasm, I think that's going to bode well for the city. I think, I don't know if you intend to make comments, but I really do, again, also think it's, you should be commended for foregoing voluntarily your pay-for-performance. I think that sets a good example, not only for your staff, but also for the community. And I also want to extend my appreciation for the non-represented employees for basically agreeing to forego that pay-for-performance starting in 2020. I think perhaps, again, don't know if you're going to comment, but I'd be interested maybe knowing how, some of the things that you want to do in terms of changes that you might bring. And so, but that's something that maybe can be shared now or at some other time. So again, thank you for your hard work.
Lisa, okay, super. All right, I'm going to take a turn here as well, and I just want to reiterate that the performance review did include all council members who were seated during this past year. When we were going through the city manager recruitment process, and that too seems like a long, long time ago, I'll just remind those of us who were here and some who weren't, that we went through the process once, and we didn't hire any of the candidates because we didn't feel that they had reached that bar. And when we went through the process the second time, we had several very strong candidates, but it was clear at that time, both from the feedback coming from council as well from staff, that we felt that you, Julie Underwood, would be best fitting for our community. And I think the last two years have really proven that to be true. The reasons, I think, again, you know, looking back on those last few years, what we were looking for was somebody who was going to bring more of a collective team leadership approach, and that meant both to the city staff, but also with council, and most importantly, with the community. We were hoping for somebody who would be bringing new ideas, so people who, you know, someone who could look at a situation or a problem and think creatively about how we might do it differently. And as was called out in your performance review, there were examples such as the Let's Talk and the Town Hall, et cetera. So we look forward to hearing more about how we can do good things better, differently. And also, one of the things that I have respected is you being very clear with us in saying when we needed to bring in specialists, when we needed to bring in people who were beyond the great staff that we have, but ultimately, we're a small city. And I think recognizing when and where we need that help is truly an asset. So I'm very pleased. I do definitely stand behind this consensus report. I would also commend you, and again, for those who did not read the Agenda Bill, the city manager's compensation plan allows for an up to 4% pay-for-performance bonus. And the recommendation from Julie, from the city manager, is that she forego that this year despite her very strong review. And it's based on the budgetary challenges and the projected deficits equally. I know she and city leadership, so not just Julie, but the leadership team as a whole, will be, I believe, eliminating and/or presenting discussions about eliminating that pay-for-performance more broadly throughout the city for the coming year, which, again, I think speaks to a sense of responsibility and commitment. So with that, I think I would also echo what Benson said, and whether it's tonight, in the future, or both, it would be terrific for you to share with us, you know, what it is that you're hoping for coming into 2019, and equally, not only what you're hoping for, but how council can help and support you. And equally, I would encourage you to call on the community as to how they can help and support you, because at the end of the day, it is about all of us. It is about 24,000 islanders. So thank you for what was a challenging, but a very, I think, strong performance year from you, and I feel fortunate to have you as our city manager.
Thank you, and thank you very much. I expressed this to council. I was also pleased to see that there are no surprises in the evaluation. An employee always appreciates that, and I think that speaks to the fact that we have our one-on-one monthly meetings. We're always talking. You're always giving me very pointed, direct, candid feedback all the time. You know, as far as receiving feedback from our residents, all I have to do is go on Nextdoor. I hear all about it. So I get emails from residents all the time. I meet with residents all the time. I'm always looking for more feedback from our residents. I welcome that, you know. We can always improve. We can always do better. As I look ahead, I definitely think, I think my theme to staff, to the team, is really about being resilient in times of really kind of challenging changes that we have to face. We have to be adaptable. We have to be willing to, you know, face those setbacks, face those obstacles. And obviously, when you're an effective team, it sure makes it so much easier and so much better. Really, kudos to the leadership in the past who have really formed the team. I'm really excited. I've been able to include some new team members that I think really align with our values. And honestly, it really is a team effort. I cannot do this by myself, cannot do this by myself. It really takes the, really, the hard work that our staff produces. It takes your leadership. I mean, it takes, it takes a lot of people to run a $32 million corporation. So it takes a lot of people to make that work, so as demonstrated hopefully tonight. But again, no surprises. I, you know, I'm, I wouldn't be honest if I said, "Oh, I am so excited about what we're facing." No, I'm not. No, I'm not. But that being said, I've been very honest with the team about that, I think, hopefully that's something they appreciate. But that, but we face challenges all the time. So it's time to, I think, really recognize, not put our heads in the sand, but face it and really move forward. So, and I think that's ultimately, I think that's ultimately my charge, is to really help our team, help our community, really face what's ahead of us and move forward.
Yeah, great, well, thank you. Unfortunately, we do have public appearances when that's an option.
I have checked with the clerk of the council, under Robert's rules of orders, I have the opportunity to ask for permission, I know you can deny.
I'm going to look to Deb and Ally to ensure that that...
My explanation to him is, we do have public appearances that he could certainly ask, and it was up to the council whether or not they decide to let somebody speak on a regular business item.
I want to look to council. Council, is there a motion to allow someone to speak out of, side of public appearances? Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, opposed, I think it would be, yeah, there's three? So yes, we can go ahead and get the clock going, we'll give you three minutes.
Excuse me, was there affirmative majority of four? I wasn't sure.
There's three.
We need four votes for a council majority.
Even if it's just five of us here tonight?
It's a majority of the whole council, so yes, still four.
I'll go ahead and affirm, please.
And when you make your comments, can you just clarify why you didn't speak during public appearances?
Yes.
So again, just to reiterate, the basic rules of public appearances holds now? And with that, three minutes.
Thank you for the, thank you for the council's opportunity to speak at this time. Mike Leahy, 9852 Mercer Wood Drive, Island resident. I wanted to talk specifically on agenda item number five, which is the one that you have before you right now. I do want to somewhat echo the comments that were rendered by one gentleman during appearances on this. I feel that there has not been adequate community feedback on the issue of evaluation here. In my particular case, I wrote to the office of the City Manager and hand-delivered a letter to the office of the City Manager on 19 October 2017. I had to wait after multiple inquiries, 11 months and two days, before I received a response. Your honor, you, the mayor, were CC'd on my additional email correspondence in that. And Mrs. Andrell, you were great in facilitating subsequent responses to that. I realize that I'm only one individual, that this is a large island, but I have to say that, I think that it's a matter of the council and the staff practicing the tolerance that they preach, that all islanders, I feel, are entitled to timely responses and that they should receive adequate consideration. I may or may not have received an answer that I liked, and that's acceptable, but I feel that this time, when you're discussing a performance evaluation, that that should be brought to the attention of the council, because there is no forum for individuals to bring these matters up and try and have them addressed. And again, your honor, you were CC'd on my October 28, 2018 email, so I know you have some familiarity with this. And so I feel that it's time that something was done to address that matter, particularly with this individual performance evaluation. So just a short message on that to explain that I think it was an unreasonable delay, that there are certain injustices there, and that we're creating a question of trust and a question of support for the voting residents of the island when these kinds of things happen. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I believe we are now going to go ahead and move on to other business. Are there any? It was a recommendation, so I'm going to actually look to Deb and/or Carrie, do we need to? Do we need to do anything formally?
You can make a motion simply accepting the performance review as prepared.
Okay, so is there, is there a motion to accept the City Manager's 2018 Performance Review and Evaluation Report?
I move to accept the City Manager, Julie Underwood's 2018 Performance Review and Evaluation Report.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Passes. Great. So now we'll go ahead and move on to other business. Are there any upcoming council member absences to report?
Yes, I'm going to be absent March 5.
Okay, great. Any others?
And the schedule is the 5th and the 19th for March?
Julie? Ally's nodding yes? Okay, so 5th and the 19th. Anticipating no great snow and/or other dramas out there, it'll be interesting to finally move into what feels like a regular cadence on the way into March. Next up, we have the planning schedule, and for that, we have Julie.
Because this evening was a special meeting, you have a meeting immediately following, so next Tuesday, of course, that's March 5. So you will get your packet towards the end of the week. And I want to call out on March 19, we will be doing a, kind of a go-to meeting with our consultant management partners to update you on the process or the progress of the fiscal sustainability plan, as well as a chance for you to review the draft council goals, actually council priorities and work plan. So, and then, again, as part of the planning session, on April 2, we have scheduled a study session to discuss youth and family services funding. So just want to call attention to those few things, and then, I don't know, Mayor, if there are other opportunities to, if I can add a few items, perhaps under council member reports, just to update you on.
Okay, also, I appreciate that Evan is not here, but I do understand that there has been a change in the schedule from the Planning Commission. I can pull it up, his email, but I think it might be helpful to inform the public.
Yes, in fact, that's one of the items here, wanted to update you on. As many of you already know, the Planning Commission met last night, it was a long meeting, very productive, but as a result of really needing additional time, they have tentatively set May 15 as the possible rescheduled public hearing for the community facilities code amendment and code. So that is tentatively set for May 15. And so we'll be sure and communicate that to the public. And for those who are tracking, do track it, because that is a tentative schedule. So that was one item to update you on. May 15.
What, is that a?
I'm assuming it's at the Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
Public hearing.
This is, this is an update to the Planning Commission's schedule versus the city council?
Yeah. Yeah. Right now, their work is, they're doing subcommittee work and some of the, really, almost like study session work, as they're going through that now.
Okay, great.
Is there a, I see that November 5 is still listed? That's a Tuesday?
Which, no...
November 5, I mean, it's down the road, but that's, I think that's the, that we had talked about maybe changing that because it's election.
Oh, that's election night?
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
That's, it's way down the road, but...
I'll note it, and I'll work with Deb to offer some other dates.
You are planning ahead. Um, okay.
Couple other, if you don't mind, just a couple...
Yeah, why don't you, yeah, go ahead.
Intergovernmental items. I know we received a request from Representative Sen asking us about an accessory dwelling unit bill in Olympia, you know, asking how, how does this work, because she's very familiar with our ADU policy. And so we responded that we did not support the bill, the bill, and it's House Bill 1797, so we were really delighted, she reached out to us to even ask us. It provided us a chance to tell her that we did not support this bill. It's, of course, preempting local authority with a one-size-fits-all solution. Two attached dwelling, accessory dwelling units could allow for three families living on one lot, which is a significant change to our character for our neighborhoods. Many of the changes would result in significant change, of course, to the residential character of the island, and it interferes with our ability to fund local infrastructure improvements necessary for new development. So for those reasons, we offered our opposition to the bill.
I would also call out that the staff turned that around in just a matter of hours.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Because that was an important, that was an important response.
And you're probably already aware of this, but King County Executive Constantine proposed a six-year parks levy. Pleased to see that the levy includes 60 million allocated towards city projects. So that's an increase of 25 million from the last levy. So we receive roughly about $100 million from the current parks levy that the county...
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand. I'm sorry, hundred thousand, what did I say, 100 million?
All our problems.
Jeez, thank you for correcting me. Well, we don't have a financial challenge anymore, no. Sorry, $100,000. And so we're optimistic that this increase will see more of that pass through back to us. I know when we were originally doing the calculation, it would mean roughly 2 million of local tax dollars would go to King County. So 2, 2.5 million, and to see only $100,000 return, so to see a little bit more of that is encouraging. So that is something we will be paying attention to. It's potentially gearing up for a August election, and this is their renewal and an increase. So the proposed levy amount is 16.82 cents per 1,000. It has to go through, this is his proposal that he has sent to the King County council members, so it has to go through that process now. So I'm sure we'll be learning more about it in the coming months, but I wanted to alert you to that as well.
Sorry, what's the current assessment?
I want to say like, is it eight cents?
I think it is 13 cents.
Is it 13?
Yeah, yeah. This is the enhanced.
So this is the enhanced?
The enhanced, I think it was going to add about six cents?
It's enhanced, and what, and so it renews plus enhanced, and I think a big portion of this was to go to land conservation, I believe.
Is it possible to have somebody from the county come and talk to us about this levy?
Yes, I guess the question I would have for you, are you just wanting an informational, are you wanting to take a position? So you want to think about that.
I was thinking, right now, just information, if it, maybe it's...
I think it's a little premature until the county...
Sure, sure.
But maybe after that.
I think there's a lot of procedural steps before it's even confirmed.
Sure, I mean, assuming, assuming that the council...
And my understanding is it's going to pick.
Oh, is it still? Okay, okay. So that'll, yeah. So I guess what we do is we just, we wait a little bit, see where this goes. Okay. So you said it was 18 cents. Julie, anything else?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Great, so with that, we're now going to talk, the board liaison assignments, and apologies to everybody, it took some time for this to get finalized. So what you have in front of you is council assignments to the city boards and commissions, committees, local assignments, regional assignments, and then those that are appointed by SCA, which we wouldn't be determining here locally this evening, but were appointments that were made back in December. It was actually pretty straightforward, so thank you, council, there was not a lot of overlap, there was not a lot of redundancy, there were a couple gaps we had in terms of people prioritizing particular committees or assignments. So what I did and confirmed by Saleem is basically just took primarily what your top wishes were. In the couple cases where you see the yellow box, that's where we had nobody step forward. So what we did was we just tried to fill in people and load balance. We looked at, you know, what different council members were carrying, where there might be some opportunity. So we went ahead and made some tentative assignments, so you can see that there's actually three of those. Definitely willing, happy to have that conversation, but thought we would make a full straw man available to you this evening. I would call out just a couple things. First, on ETP, we do, we should, we could have one more representative. I would encourage anybody who's interested in regional transportation and forward-looking regional transportation to consider that. We really have an agenda, I'm chair this year, we very much have a forward-looking agenda, trying to anticipate rather than respond or react. The next one, for myself, I went ahead and took the PTA advocacy committee. I'm just going to be honest, I'm going to do that on an as-available and as-needed basis. And then finally, the diversity and inclusion committee that we had had has more or less been, I don't want it to say dissolved because it didn't go away, it's been, the work is actually happening in other parts within the city and other conversations. So it's not that it's not important, it's just being addressed, worked, and promoted in a different context. So definitely open for questions, conversation here at the dais or offline as council chooses. So I know Benson had a comment, and I've seen Lisa.
Just a correction, well, I guess two comments, one is a correction, so I'm no, I'm not on that Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy, so...
That's, I actually am, so I should have caught that.
Yeah, so you have taken my place.
It's now me, I've taken Benson's. Okay.
And so that, you know, perhaps frees up some time, so I guess unless somebody grabs one of these yellow spots or whatever, or open spots, I'll take a look and see if something catches my fancy or something.
Okay. Lisa?
Well, and I didn't over-submit because I was just trying to load balance myself without knowing what I was getting into. Who would be my contact at the Safe Energy Leadership Alliance, and do you know when they meet?
We can get Ally and Deb to do that offline.
So just for clarification, this was one that Councilmember Bassett had started on a few years ago, and so I think he was the member on this, he asked for it to be put on this list, so I would talk with him also, just to get some background information on that.
Perfect, thanks.
Thanks, Ally. Wendy, you were the other person, again, when I was trying to fill in the blanks, I was trying to kind of balance a little bit of regional with on-island. You don't have to respond tonight if you don't want to, but I know we...
I'm happy to respond, so I just left it open because I knew there was maybe some movement that was going to happen, so I'm happy to be your backup on ETP and PTA.
Okay, great.
And I'm thrilled to learn more about pick, so thank you for the alternate position.
Super.
So whatever you need, I can back you up and vice versa, if I can't make it to a couple of these meetings, I hope you guys will back me up if you can.
I guess, good, good team partnership. Great, so good, we have this...
Mayor Burtland, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the sheet that you guys had given back to me, you noted an alternate on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Is that just because it's you?
Because it hasn't been formed yet.
Okay, I just...
And I didn't know if you'd have one council member or more than one council member.
Yeah, I would say we'll just stick with one. I think that's in line with the rest of our boards and commissions, and I think that's what the code is set up, to just have one council member. So I'm going to remove that, but if there gets to be a place where you need a sub in, I think that Jesse would be open to that. I think we want to just keep it one council member now.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want me to back you up on that, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, you know, it's good, I think everybody gets a sense of where the, who the people are who are particularly interested in those issues, so we'll keep that in mind. Is there an idea about when we would anticipate the Parks and Rec Board even beginning? Is there an idea about when we would anticipate the Parks and Rec Board even beginning?
Yep. June.
June, okay, great.
We'll start advertising it with the rest of our boards and commissions.
Super. So that, with that, we have Councilmember Reports. Saleem, anything? Benson?
Oh, well, I'm assuming, yeah, I'll assume Wendy's going to handle something, so.
Oh, no, we can talk about the Rotary Run, I got other stuff.
Oh, okay, well.
Go, go, go. It's a broken record.
Oh, no. Well, this, March 24, Sunday, the Rotary Run event. I registered this today, okay, so, yeah, so. But I don't want to be there alone, so I want to make sure everybody, to the extent you can do it, register to walk, which is, that's what I'm doing, okay? So anyway, but it's a fun event, so.
I'll chase you.
Are you doing the 5K or the 10K or the 13K?
You know, I'm not doing, I used to do the 10K run. I can't do it now, so I'm going to do the 5K walk.
5K walk, all right, bring your family.
I am.
Lisa, anything?
I don't. I think I'm going to be Benson's guest, though, at the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Breakfast.
Great.
So looking forward to that.
That's right, next week, March 6. Okay, Wendy? And actually, just so we know, Wendy's been hanging posters at the Mercer Island Thrift Shop for the half marathon, as spotted by my parents.
I got to meet your mother.
Yes.
And I ran into your dad at the community center the other day. That was fun.
My parents are everywhere.
Yeah, he didn't know who I was, and I said, "I knew it was B W's dad." Yeah, so there's a Rotary Run coming, and the snow delayed some people from registering, so the more we can get the word out. It's a great community event. People run, people walk, people jog, people volunteer, people are on the sidelines. It's super fun. So get your tutus and capes and tiaras if you don't want to be a serious athlete. More seriously, though, the King County Conservation District is up for renewal this year. So in addition to the parks levy that the county exec put forward, the Conservation District, it's been around for a number of years. It's a $10 to $15 fee on your property taxes to support conservation works throughout the county. So there's a whole strategic planning process going. The executive director's taking it to PICK on the 12th or 14th, whenever the next meeting is, to sort of help inform the PICK about this hidden treasure that is the King County Conservation District. And that will be separate and distinct and different from the parks levy. So we, as elected officials throughout the county, are going to have to figure out how to talk about both issues and recommend support of both, or one or the other, or neither. So think about that. Also, there's a pancake breakfast on Sunday. My favorite Boy Scout troop 457 is hosting a pancake breakfast in manual. Bring $10 to feed your family, and you'll get served by these cute cooks and Boy Scouts. And there's a chamber meeting on the 7th. And Lori Guyven is bringing somebody articulate, I can't remember who it is, but the chamber meeting is always good for bringing our small businesses together.
Is it Donna, Donna Kaloski? It's a superintendent?
Even better. And then down the road, she's going to have our recology friends there at the following meeting, and then Marilyn Strickland from the Seattle Chamber. So the upcoming topics in the next three months. It's always the first Thursday of the month, and always a good way to get connected to our small business community. And what else? Da-da-da-da. On the 9th is the Youth Theater Gala, too, if you guys want to support Youth Theater Northwest. They'll be hosting that in Seattle. And that's all I've got.
Okay, not a whole lot coming from me. May or may not be doing a Rotary Run. For those of you, historically, I once was the fastest island woman, but that was decades ago. So I might just need to let that stand. It's also my birthday weekend, but we'll see. Tomorrow, we have GMPC. We'll be talking about Vision 2050, the process going through there, which is actually prelude to a lot of the work that'll go on with the comp plan renewals for 2023 and all the workback associated there. We're also going to be talking about the Subcommittee that is working on housing affordability in King County as sponsored by Councilmember Balducci. With that, I think we're done, and we're done before 9 o'clock. Meeting adjourned.